Thank you, and welcome to the June 7th Dr. Cog Board Work Session. I'm Win Shaw, Vice Chair of Dr. Cog and the Chair of today's Board Work Session. It's four o'clock and our meeting is now in order. The first business in order is to open up the period for public comment. Melinda, do you see any hands raised for public comment?
At this time, Madam Chair, I do not.
All right, thank you very much. With no one here for public comment, we'll close the period of public comment. Our next business in order is the summary of the March 1st Board Work Session. That's a long time ago. Are there questions or changes? Hearing none. The summary will be accepted as distributed. The next business in order is an update on development of a comprehensive economic development strategy, or SEDs. Dr. Flo Retano, Director, Partnership and Innovation, thank you for being here, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully, everybody is seeing that.
Yes.
Terrific. Well, it's been a little while since we've talked to you about our progress on the outreach for creating a comprehensive economic development strategy for the Dr. Cog region. And this afternoon, I'd like to give you an update as well as talk a little bit more about the timeline and then give you a bit more insight into what a SEDs actually is and what our next steps will be. So following the June 15th Board Meeting last year, we started to reach out to potential strategic partners as directed by you all at that meeting. And this is a list of some of the more important partner meetings that we've had over the last year. It's not a comprehensive and inclusive list. It doesn't include some of the smaller meetings that we've had with representatives from Denver, South Denver, and other organizations and municipalities. This is a timeline, and you'll notice that this timeline is really aggressive. And what really started us on this conversation and down this road anyway was a meeting that we had with the Office of Economic Development and International Trade when they said that they were at the direction of the governor interested in creating a statewide SEDs. So that put us on the trajectory then of looking at developing ours for the region rather than having the state do it. So because we're trying to be good partners in that effort and try to meet their timeline as well, that's why we've ended up with such an aggressive schedule. But MetroVision gives us a really solid jumping off point. So it's not like we're starting from square one. And honestly, sometimes in this game, it's a little bit better to be the second mouse instead of the early bird, if you get that analogy. And this is what I mean by that, because right now the EDA has issued new SEDs going forward and really streamlines the process and streamlines the content rather than what you see on the left, which, you know, is kind of an interesting doorstop of 150 pages or more. What the EDA is looking at is something that is somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 pages, but very infographic heavy within those 30 pages. I've reviewed a lot of SEDs, and there are some of them that are upward of 200 pages long. And I'm going to assure you that we are not writing a doctoral dissertation here for Dr. Cog's SEDs. It's more like the Cliff's Notes version. And there is actually further guidance from the EDA that they're interested maybe in the development of a web-only version of the SED, which they think would give much wider access. Well, if the SEDs has transitioned from being a heavyweight doorstop to being something that's nimble, dynamic, and creative, sort of like what we have with MetroVision already, these are some of the elements that we need to be including in our effort on the SEDs. So these are all the elements to go into developing a SEDs, and it's logical, as you would understand. The summary background is really a current snapshot of the region where we are economically speaking and what are the economic drivers? What are the primary industry clusters? What are the demographic trends? And it's all about the data. That's why on that timeline, you saw that the data gathering and analysis came early in the process. And then we move into the SWOT analysis and the Strategic Action Plan. And this is where the stakeholders become very important to the process. And then we look at an evaluation framework, which is largely governed by the governance team. It's called the leadership team, called the strategy team and different SEDs. And it's how we will define success going forward. And then finally, I'll talk a little bit about economic resilience in a minute. These, this comes directly from the EDA. This is what the EDA expects all of the elements of the SEDs to contain and the questions that they're looking to answer. And for the most part, they're pretty straightforward. Economic resilience piece of it includes three primary attributes. They're looking for the ability to recover quickly from a shock, the ability to withstand the shock, and the ability to avoid the shock altogether to the economy. And it's a relatively new concept for the EDA. And the way the EDA looks at it, it includes both what they call a steady state and a responsive economic resilience initiatives. But actually, the definition I like the best comes from NACO, the National Association of Counties. And they describe economic resilience as an ability, a community's ability to foresee, adapt to, and leverage changing conditions to their advantage. That's what we want our SEDs to do. While a steady-state economic resilience, those types of initiatives tend to be longer term, and they're efforts to seek to bolster the region's ability to withstand or avoid a shock. So that would be things like economic diversification. So some of us remember, you know, the downturn in the 90s and the arts and what we went through then. And that's what they're looking for, the steady-state economic resilience component to include. It's responsive economic resilience. And this is interesting, because this is very forward-looking. And it looks at what kind of capabilities does the organization need to develop in order to be responsive in recovering from an incident? And it doesn't matter if it's something like the Marshall Fire or the massive floods we had in 2013 or COVID-19. But technology can play a large part in this. And that's why the EDA has such a really strong focus on broadband, because technology is important for that provision of resilience. Well, you'll notice that the characteristics that are listed here, and this also comes from the EDA directly, that they're very similar, identical to our own MetroVision. And what this effort is intended to do is to establish much closer working relationships with those other entities already engaged in economic development, like Denver South, Metro Denver EDC, or local, regional, city, county EDCs. And the reference there again looks at the broad definition, which includes both the static and the responsive and the responsive aspects of resiliency. That's what they're looking for. Well, the EDA, because they're the ones that we have to get the imprimatur from, comes with their own set of criteria that they think should be examined, in a sense. And those are the seven elements that you see on the screen right now. And they say that the SEDs needs to examine them. That doesn't mean that the SEDs needs to have action items addressing every single one of these. They're guidelines, and they want the region to explore what that means for the economy of the region. But it doesn't mean that we have to have a list of 10 objectives to accomplish for manufacturing. So the structure for the development of a SEDs is also mandated by the EDA, as you would expect. And it's variably referred to as a strategy team, a governance team, a leadership team. But this is the group that overall is responsible for the development of the SEDs. And the EDA says that that strategy committee needs to be representative of the main economic interests of the region and has to include members of the private sector, public officials, community leaders, representatives of workforce development boards, institutions of higher education, minority and labor groups, and private individuals. Typical size for a strategy team is somewhere between 12, 15, and 25. A key role that the strategy team plays is to help identify critical stakeholders to participate in the SWOT analysis and the strategic plan development. In our case, with Metro Denver EDC as a really strong partner, we expect that there will also be data sharing and analysis that is done jointly to help inform both the summary background as well as the evaluation framework. Now, this is not an exhaustive list here. It's illustrative. It's meant to provide examples of some of the types of agencies and groups that we know the EDA expects to participate on our strategy team. And in a similar manner, the EDA also has expectations for stakeholders. And that's an even broader group. And because we know that the EDA is interested in national security and international trade, we might, for example, reach out to the World Trade Center. We have one here. And, you know, talk to them about international trade issues. So these are just also illustrative and not exhaustive. The stakeholder group can be much bigger and oftentimes is much bigger than that strategy group, the leadership group. So I pulled a few examples of the sorts of projects and initiatives that other MPOs like Dr. Cog have initiated in the recent past. And you recognize the WASATCH Front Mid-America Regional Council. They participated in a panel discussion with you all last year. And then I added the Atlanta Regional Council, since we're always looking at Atlanta as a benchmark. And in your packet, there's a much more extensive list of projects, complete with links to some of those projects that are listed. Well, we know from our early conversations and work with the IIJA Regional Grants Initiative, Regional Grants Navigation Initiative here, that there's a significant need out there for basic elements like broadband, affordable housing, workforce development, clean energy initiatives, electrification of fleets, microgrid technologies, resilience, wildland urban interface planning. These are the sorts of projects that a SEDs could help jumpstart. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but with the right partners, and we think we've identified most, if not all of them, we can meet both this aggressive timeline and the high bar that we've set for ourselves. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Flo. Are there questions? Director, Executive Director Rex, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, very much, and wonderful summary, Flo. Thank you so much for that. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. And Flo talked about, you know, being the second mouse in her metaphor there. And it is right. So just so you all know, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, PPA CG, or Papa Cog, as I like to call them, they're going through a similar exercise right now. And they're a couple, three months ahead of us, but it's been nice to be able to see their progress. And they're on a very tight timeline as well, so it's not unexpected. I also want to say, listen, we've been very deliberate, as you could tell by that time, by the, you know, some of the meetings that we've seen. We've talked to you probably a year ago when we initiated this and been very deliberate about reaching out to economic development professionals and having a conversation to make sure they understand exactly what it is we are proposing. And because we didn't want them to feel like we were, you know, trying to usurp what they were doing, right? That we hope that this was something, this was an added value for them, that what this process will do is open up additional federal monies for projects within your communities. And once we got in front of them, they fully understood it. And I think more of the questions were, well, why haven't we done this before? More so than, why are we doing it, right? So it was a great conversation. Listen, we're really going to rely on Metro Denver EDC as a, you know, kind of a, you know, prime partner in this, because they're very similar to us in nature. You know, they're collaborative of economic development professionals. And so we're excited about this. I think there's a great opportunity, and I think there's a lot of value to our region with this. So Flo and I are both happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Doug. Questions or comments? I actually had a comment that although the list of stakeholders was not exhaustive, we might want to consider someone like CSU, who through their global programming might bring some insight into, you know, water use and that kind of thing, because in addition to wildfire, I think understanding water and our needs and trying to at least regulate them, understand them and regulate them. To begin with, they're both important, and they may add some insight.
Madam Chair, CSU is on our course here, particularly because they have the Spur Campus.
Yeah.
And that's such an important benefit.
Yes.
So they, yeah, they're definitely on our list.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Director Odericio.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm sorry I'm in transit, but I'm not driving at this moment. So, that's good. Okay, so I think it's good to have the partners that we're talking about, and I appreciate it. I think what we need to make sure is that we stick true to the fact that it needs to be a regional effort. A lot of times, people are concerned that it tends to be very focused on the capital city, very centralized. And we have to make sure that, I think that very recently, we've learned that if we have all the employment centers in just a few areas, that when the time comes for us to get transit in these other areas, that is used against some of the folks in the surrounding communities. And we need to make sure that we are really talking about economic development, because I kind of see this as we've been on this highway where you've got all these issues in different lanes, economic development, transportation, equity, environment. We knew they were all in the same highway, but now they're all merging into one lane all at once. And so all these issues are stacking on top of each other. And I just think that we need to very intentionally take steps to make sure that we are aware that when somebody brings in an economic development win with 800 jobs, that's going to put more pressure on that community to provide 800 new homes. And that we have to be able to all do our part in making sure that the balance is there. That also means that that area is probably going to need some help with roads and transit. And so I just want to make sure that we kind of think through all of the interconnectedness and interdependence that we all have on each other, now that all these issues are crashing together in this one big merging lane on a very fast highway.
Good comments. You know, it's a really good example, I think, or the way you phrased it, everything merging together. It's very, very true. And there are so many components to be considered, housing, transportation, jobs, all of it, and so many other corollary things as well. Thank you. Director Walton.
Oh. Thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you for the presentation. As you were talking about resilience and stakeholders, it reminded me of a potential opportunity to invite the Colorado Small Business Development Center out of Boulder. They have a lot of experience from the flood of 2013. And I think perhaps they've been involved in any assistance after the Marshall Fire as well. But if you kind of get a little bit deeper into looking for stakeholders in that area, that is, that might be a great opportunity and maybe some unique perspectives and experience. They also might have some ideas of additional people or maybe they themselves on some of the success stories after the flood for the mountain community of Lyons. And I think that is also to kind of round out the perspectives of our entire region. That would perhaps be a beneficial group to reach out to.
Thank you, Director Walton. That's an excellent recommendation, particularly to introduce some geographic diversity into the conversation. We knew that SBDCs were going to be on our radio screen along with the Workforce Development Council. So yeah, thanks for pointing in that direction. Thank you.
Very good. Other comments or questions? Well, it sounds quiet, so I think we can move to our next agenda.
Madam Chair, if I may, just real quick.
Certainly.
Just to tell you regarding next steps. So we will bring this back to the board at our June 21st meeting and request formal action from the board to allow us to proceed forward. Just wanted to let everybody know that this is not the last time you're going to see it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Very good. So our next item is a discussion on development.
Madam Chair, me again. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Your Odericio has his hand up.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, the action that we're taking, Doug, is to proceed and moving forward as Dr. Cog doing this. The alternative to Dr. Cog doing, leading this effort is what?
Unless someone else raises their hand in this group, nobody else.
Well, actually, the state will write something for us.
Oh, I guess there's that.
So when you say that, it's like the state will write something for the Denver area metro area, or the state will do it on its own.
Well, the state is developing a statewide SEDs. And what their intent has been all along is to working with all of the existing EDDs that have comprehensive economic development strategies already in place. And that's why, you know, the push for Pike's Peak Area Cog, Dr. Cog, and Upstate to complete their SEDs is so that it just rolls up into the statewide effort rather than having the state write something in a vacuum, which we know sometimes how that goes. So.
Flo, but also correct me, I thought, you know, the state does a statewide SEDs that it's not necessarily sanctioned. It wouldn't necessarily qualify as an official SEDs for this region?
That's correct. It would not. So it would not provide us with the access to EDA funding.
So this is not, in two weeks, will not be to approve the specifics, but simply to authorize the SEDs for this region?
Yeah, just allowing us to move forward with it.
Okay, okay. Director Odericio, are you comfortable with that?
I just, whether it's talking to our staff or some of like boards like this, I like to know, like, what are we, what is on the spoon that we're being fed? And I always like to know, are we being offered light blue, dark blue, and medium blue, or are we being offered other options? And it sounds like the option is either Dr. Cog does this or it's as a sanctioned effort, which opens the door for EDA funding. Or we have the state do it, which doesn't open the door for EDA funding, and then we proceed as the status quo. Those are the two options. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So next, we have a discussion on development of a regional housing strategy. Sheila Lynch, Division Director, Regional Planning and Development. Thank you for presenting. Please proceed.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair. Really excited to be back to continue the conversation about housing. I am going to share my screen. There we go. I hope you all can see that.
Yes.
Perfect. Wonderful. All right. So we thought it would be important to circle back after our great discussion that we had at the Board Retreat in May to follow up and to further discuss what we think the scope and scale of a regional housing strategy will be. So what we hope to cover this evening is to first zero in a little bit more on what's the purpose and intent of a regional housing strategy. Then we'll talk a little bit more specifically about what are our desired deliverables and general timeline. And then we'll touch really briefly on when we think about a regional housing strategy, what are those engagement objectives that we have? And then lastly, I'm going to go over what the next steps are to move forward. So as we've shared on other calls, we've explained that staff have been very busy engaging with other regions to understand how they've taken on regional housing strategies. We've spoken to a diverse group of regions. At this point, we've had conversations with four, sorry, seven different groups. Most of them were led by or in close collaboration with the Regional Planning Council. One was led by a cross-sector consortium that focused at a county scale. What we learned is that no regional housing strategy is the same. Yet, we found that there were elements in all of these efforts that really could be applicable in the Denver region. So this map shows kind of the areas of these regions, who we talked to. They certainly represent many different parts of the country and different sized regions. All of the regions experienced some level of growth, and all were contemplating how to expand housing options for diverse needs and income levels. All of them had some focus on really trying to address the affordability challenges in their region. And all included partnerships and collaborations in the development of the regional housing strategy. Many of them are in the midst of implementing it, and they're developing partnerships to do the implementation as well. So as you can imagine, with such diverse regions, there were varied approaches and all tried to respond to their unique contexts. Our initial assessment determined that there's not just one that could be a model, and that's why this slide tries to pull out the key elements that we learned from these conversations that seem most applicable. So first, what all of them expressed was that they recognized that housing was really, it was important to look regionally, because when we think about housing markets, housing markets are regional in nature and also subregional. Not all, but a few of them looked at sub-market analyses and tried to really use that to customize the strategies that they moved forward with. Local government partners in our region are working hard to address this challenge. And one of the things we learned from the other regions is that it's really critical that a piece of this include some technical assistance, resource sharing, convening to really support the efforts at the local level. We learned from many of them that engagement is critical, not only during the development of the strategy, but also to think about engagement as you're moving into implementation as well. And one of the things we heard from more than half of them was that regions that took the time to focus their strategies on where we can maximize and align investments saw the greatest results. Specifically, some of the regions spoke to their investments in transportation and how they really aligned their strategies around housing to ensure that they really reaped that maximum benefit of that investment. And lastly, we did hear from many of them that it's important to be strategic about how you fund the strategies moving forward, that just developing some great strategies without some thought to, how are we actually going to implement them and put dedicated funding towards them? That's where they saw the greatest results when they did that. So as you all know, from the many So as you all know, from the many conversations with all of you over the last year, we see much of the purpose and intent coming from those conversations. While we learn from other regions, we're really leaning on the conversations we've had with all of you to start guiding what's the real purpose and intent of doing a regional housing strategy. And so the board retreat in May was the last conversation we had with all of you, and this slide tries to at least summarize, there was so much rich and great conversation that happened. But we tried to zero in on what seemed like those points that seem most critical as we think about the purpose of a regional housing strategy. And so first, local communities have done critical work to understand the impacts of the housing crisis in their communities, and we need to draw on those learnings. The second point was that reflecting on the discussions during the legislative session, Senate Bill 213 identified solutions without understanding the breadth and depth of this problem. And a regional housing assessment will help define the problem we're trying to solve so that we can actually design strategies and solutions that can have an impact. The third thing that we took away from from the last discussion was that regional housing work must include an on-ramp for policy solutions at the state and local level. And that policy strategies need to address this multifaceted problem, and we need to focus on the policies that'll have that greatest impact. And then lastly, we're not starting from scratch. We have some really great planning infrastructure in our in our region. And so we know that whatever work we do, we need to integrate this into our work through Metrovision and also our regional transportation plan.
Sheila, I just had a question.
Yeah.
Key takeaways, we talked a little bit about having or the need for like a project of project managers for all of the initiatives that are going on, and I didn't see that in the key takeaways. Was that just didn't make the top four? Or where are we at with kind of that thought?
Yeah, great point. And I think you'll see as we talk more about the deliverables and timeline and our intent to seek some assistance through consultants, that we will, that is one piece that we will certainly be focusing in on. So deliverables and timeline. We wanted to just highlight that there's work underway, that behind the scenes, Dr. Cox staff have been busy conducting a lot of different research related to the regional conversations that I just summarized. And also, they have started a what we're calling a crosswalk of existing plans. So they have done an inventory to understand what communities across the region have developed housing needs assessments or plans in the last five years. And they're going through all of them to really understand where are those common strategies that are emerging? Also, what data and information are local communities using to help understand the challenges in their community? And is there a way to leverage that at the at the regional level as well? We're also been busy trying to draft a scope of work to understand what is the work we really feel like we need some consulting assistance on. And then lastly, they have been compiling a list of consultants to hopefully we get a a broad response from our RFP. So when we think about specific deliverables and timeline, we have started to define it in three distinct phases of the work. So the first being really about assessment, we need to understand that unmet unmet demand for housing. And also, what does our future needs look like when it comes to housing? In addition, one of the things that we think is critical is understanding really, where is housing in the right places? So how do we look at this from a key geographies perspective? To understand where should we be investing in housing related to other investments that are already underway or have already been made? And then the second piece would be understanding the barriers. So why, why haven't we seen housing development in the way that that we we know we need? And then developing those strategies. So what would be the critical strategies to address those barriers? And then lastly, we think a big piece of this is then how do we integrate this work into the regional planning work we're already doing? So that it doesn't become a standalone plan as what if what if folks say that it's a plan that just sits on the shelf? That's not our intention at all. We want to understand, okay, how do we carry this work forward into the existing structures we have through Metrovision and also our regional transportation plan? So timeline, there is clearly a critical deliverable before next spring. We recognize that we need to be prepared next spring for the legislative session to be able to articulate really what is happening in our region and what are some of the strategies? The the statewide policy strategies that are going to really make the greatest impact. And so we anticipate a deliverable. I I will say that a regional housing strategy is hard to develop in six months. So that's not our intention at all, but we will have initial deliverables related to assessment that really can inform that process. And then our hope is that we by late 2024 have these strategies and we thinking about it in terms of like, what's our regional implementation structure? What does this look like? And have that done by late 2024. So then by 2025, we have that information that we can start integrating into our update to our regional transportation plan and also to integrate it into Metrovision. So how will we do this? And what does the funding opportunities look like? And one of the things we wanted to point out is that we talked to you a little bit over the last year in a couple of different conversations, that certainly through the bipartisan infrastructure law, there is new authority to take on housing through our Metropolitan Planning Organization functions. It's very new. And so we're learning and we're working alongside our federal partners to understand that. One of the things we'll have to do, just from a procedural perspective, is we'll have to amend our unified planning work program so that it reflects this work. And so on the left side, that is the the first draft of how we see that changing in our in our in our UPWP. And then the other piece of that is that if we use this funding for even portions of the regional housing strategy, that funding does require a 20% local match. So we have already started conversations primarily at the state level, but looking at different grant programs that might fill that 20% match. So engagement objectives, this is something that many brought up in previous conversations is that we we, Dr. Cog, will be working closely with our member governments and others to to really move this forward. So we came up with a few objectives based on that input, the first being that we have to prioritize multi-sector engagement. That housing is a complex issue that requires and touches a lot of different sectors. So we need to be ready to do that. Secondly, we need to leverage partnerships to reach diverse audiences. That certainly engagement is it it's a big piece of this, and we need to understand what partnerships we can build to bring these different sectors and to bring different communities into the conversation. The third objective would would be that we would have regular engagement with our member governments at all levels of of the organization. And then the last piece that is probably a part of every engagement plan is that we need to have diverse methods, both in our hybrid world, but also how do we reach different different groups and what's the best way to to really have the dialogue in a meaningful way? So next steps, we thought we'd give you some concrete timeline of how we how we see this happening. So to amend the UPWP, we will be taking that to the Technical Advisory Committee on June 26. And then we will take that to the Regional Transportation Committee on July 18, and then to all of you at the board on July, sorry, July 18, and then to the board on July 19. Whoops. And we have started the process of the RFP process. So we hope to have a RFP published by late June, early July. And then we will bring bringing that forward to the finance and budget for review and approval in early August. And then hopefully a consultant under contract by August. This is certainly a vast timeline, but we think we can do it, and we know it's important because we need to get the work underway.
Thank you, Sheila. Great presentation. Just a quick clarifying question, the RFP specifics, is that for a consultant to kind of guide or?
Yes. So that is so the consultant can help us with that initial assessment. And we are looking at different options of how we might structure that so that we can move the the work forward as as quickly as possible and so that we can continue to explore different funding options as we go through it.
Great. Thank you. Director Harrison?
Thank you. A great presentation, both presentations, obviously, and this one as well. My question is really about the engagement objectives in regard to what do you see as from a regular engagement of member governments, diverse methods of engagement, of our role to play in terms of trying to reach out at be a liaison for, say, our planning and or communications groups within our governments? Is that what you kind of see maybe going forward?
Sorry, you cut out a bit. Can you repeat that?
It was in regard to the role that we play as directors in terms of the community engagement objectives for regular engagement of member governments and diverse methods of engagement. Do you, as as a director, you want us to play that liaison role with our with our governments in terms of with our planning department as well as with our communications leads? And trying to build those relationships so you can have those conversations?
That would be really wonderful if you could play that role. We also anticipate using some of the existing venues that we have to engage member governments. So certainly our city county manager meetings and also different ways that we've engaged staff throughout the years. But if you can help provide that liaison role, that would be very, very helpful.
Good, I can do that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Director Walton?
Thank you. I had a similar question, and you know, just kind of what kind of heads up can we give staff and be letting them know that this is an initiative and that it's very important that municipal governments participate? So thanks Ari for the question. I have a second question about coordination with other entities that may be interested in participating and influencing the legislation, the next round of legislation, assuming that's all coming. You know, we talked about at the board retreat that we had the benefit of being right on the heels of the session ending and sort of hot off the presses kind of conversations. And so, you know, I think that there was definitely interest and hopefully still is in the in the urgency. I'm sensing very near presentation, Sheila, of let's keep going. And I see that it's defined as developing a regional strategy. Not let's write the legislation as necessarily the objective, but by the way I'm connecting the dots is by creating the regional strategy and providing information in a timely manner to those who are influencing the actual words on the paper on a future bill. Hopefully, that is where we are seeing the fingerprints of our work the influencing some policymaking at the the state level. So I'm kind of seeing a head nod. So, okay, so in that regard, what other groups are kind of like hot off the presses? We got to do something so we can have our fingerprints on this as well. And how are we coordinating with that? How is our work not going to duplicate? Or how can we collaborate with other groups who also have interest in this?
Doug, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start it at least. Director Walton, thank you for the question. Yeah, so we I've I've already had some conversations with some of those folks. So in particular, CML, for example, Kevin Ballmer and I have have chatted a couple of times specifically about this, and he's fully supportive of the work that we're planning to do over the next seven, eight months. And willing to participate to the degree that we feel is is suitable for them to do so. So and and also had conversations, I actually spoke on a panel at CCI's summer conference last week and was lucky enough to sit next to John Swordout, the executive director of CCI, and we had a great conversation about what we're proposing to do and and how we can incorporate, you know, CCI into that work as well. So you know, so though those conversations are beginning right now, Director Walton, I wouldn't say that they're they're comprehensive or complete yet. But we're planning on, you know, having a big tent with regards to our engagement with this. We through email correspondence, we've had conversations with 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 various parties and even, you know, in the governor's office and suggested that, you know, we invite them to participate and learn as we learn about, you know, some of the some of the opportunities and barriers, you know, over the next seven, eight months. So you know, we're we're really going to, we're taking this part to heart because I think it's extremely important that that everybody understand what it is we're doing and can have an opportunity to learn with us. So we're, you know, if you have any ideas of of particular groups that you would like us to be involved with or like to reach out to, please just let us know.
I know that I think it's the Metro Mayor's Caucus is meeting or maybe today they met. And so, you know, I think that some people are also Dr. Cor Cog board members and so.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. So actually, Sheila was at Metro Mayor's Caucus this morning. And there was a presentation that was given, well, one of the presentations that 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 you all saw at the board retreat related to the corridor planning initiative stuff, but but Sheila also kind of laid out to Metro Mayor's today exactly what we're proposing to do in the short and longer term.
Okay, that's great to hear. I think just as a follow up to Ari's question, my my computer may be freezing. I'll stop my video. Hopefully, can you hear me still?
Yep.
It would, it might be helpful if there's an email that goes out to board directors that then we can forward to our city and county administrators just to say, hey, heads up, this is coming. This is the.
Yeah, no, I think that that's a great suggestion, Director Walton. I I would suggest that we would rather do that. We'd like to do that maybe after we get the approval of the UPWP amendment. So I don't want to be presumptuous as to what the board wants to do.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Director Mauer?
Um, yeah, I'm in my mobile office as well. Like, it looks like I've got a halo going on over here or something. But I'm just wondering, Sheila, and thank you for your presentation. This is a really, it's a difficult task you've got right now, and I appreciate everything you're doing. But I'm I'm wondering, when we're looking at these strategies, you know, X, Y, Z, is there a way that we can kind of define that we have expectations or that we have goals that we think that they'll, you know, strategies X, Y, Z? And I'm just going to throw this out there, that they, you know, we think that there'll be a percentage of housing that this will, you know, produce those kinds of things, because it's great to have all the strategies. But, you know, just like we're doing a study and I'm going, oh, I don't think that strategy is going to give us much where other strategies might. And there might be, you know, working with the consultant predictions out there. Is that possible?
Yeah, thank you, Director Mauer. This is, that's a great question, because I do think we want to be as pragmatic as possible. So our strategies really need to be based in some understanding of the need and what's really feasible so that we can be able to get a better sense of like, how how will this strategy really impact housing? I think that's why we'll probably end up with many, many different strategies, because I think what we're all realizing, there's not just one or two strategies, right? We have to really be creative. And I think one of the things we'd like to do, especially I highlighted the piece about submarket analysis, one of the things that we think would be really helpful is to have some level of submarket analysis, because the strategies that may work in one part of the region or one context may not work everywhere. So we have to be very mindful of that as well.
That sounds great. Thank you.
And if I could interject here as well, it seems that that as long as we have the local decision making as part of this, it's very helpful to look at the big picture, the regional picture. Because if a business located locates in city A and city B is right across the street, the housing needs and all of the support needs, infrastructure is going to influence both areas. So. influence both areas. So it is a combination of all of us working together and being able to make decisions for our own communities. Just my opinion. Director Baker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Sheila, I'll echo the, the great response to this presentation. It's much needed. We all know this work needs to get done. And I'm a little concerned with the timeline if the intent is to, and I don't think it is, but to stave off any legislation. Because I think the state legislature will come out of the gate hot and, and running. And it may, the fact that we, if we progress far enough along in that process to be able to give them a plan that is reasonable and able to be followed, it may influence that legislation to a degree, which is something that I think is important. Timeline, again, a little concerning because of, of when it would be done. The other thing is the RFP is the most important part of this, getting maybe all of those points that were in 213, 213 revised one, 213 revised two, B subsection four. Remove below, strike below, all those things. Getting that along with, and I'm going to echo Director Walton's measure of success. And I'd be interested in hearing more about the strategies that we've looked at and their measures of success. Because I believe that's the hardest part. So getting the RFP written in such detail that we don't have to go back and revise it because contractors are, you know, original contract and then change orders. You know, can add cost quite a bit. So those are my concerns. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Director Starker went away.
Very much. Sheila, great presentation. I will, I was at the, at the Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting this morning and, and had a good presentation from Sheila. And some other presentations relative to developing the, a regional strategy and, and very well received by the caucus. I think it's important, you know, we surveyed our members last week and fully two thirds of the membership cities had either produced or were in process of producing an affordable housing strategy and an action plan. And I would think that, that a lot of this information would help inform a regional plan that Dr. Cog would, would bring out. That, and what, what I would hope is that as we, as we survey these plans and, and reach out on a local level to find creative solutions and ideas on how to proceed and how to address the issue. That we also come together with sort of some common agreement on data points so that we can talk together kind of with a common language and a kind of common data set. And also that would really be, be valuable in sort of formulating our goals. So that we can, so that we can sort of set goals locally and, and that, that coordinate with goals and the same data set that we look regionally and look at goals and benchmarks. And also so that as we update our plans on a periodic basis, you know, I think the, the land use bill that was introduced this spring had sort of a five or six year, you know, window to, to keep these plans updated that, that as we update, we're, we're updating locally with sort of some same data strategies that we've used before. So great, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Starker. Director Levy, you're next.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. I really appreciate everybody's comments and Sheila, your presentation. I, I wanted to just put a plug in for keeping in mind that there's a reason to have this conversation and to develop this regional housing strategy. That's not related to Senate Bill 213, or I should say the bill that will not be mentioned. You know, that, that as I, as I hear a lot of the comments, it's very reactive and trying to, to preempt or, or heavily influence a subsequent land use bill. And I think we should be approaching this also from the standpoint of how can this kind of regional housing plan really benefit the work that we do here? And I, I think it's, I think it's very much needed for that purpose as we look at, at transportation funding and not I, you know, just how, how can we optimize that fund, that funding? How can we, uh, once we have a really clear regional understanding of both the housing that exists, the housing that's on the drawing boards and the housing that we need in the future? How can we make our transportation system complement that so that we, we have the, as much mobility among areas that have housing? But maybe not so many jobs and jobs that don't have housing, et cetera. So I see, I see a lot of benefits to doing something like this that are really independent of the land use bill. And I think, I think there's actually greater potential for, for us, this diverse group of, of governmental entities to come together on something that you know, that maybe isn't legislatively focused. So I, you know, just wanted to keep that in mind as we think about what we're really trying to get out of, of this, that there is a whole lot more to get out of it than something that might influence subsequent legislation. Thanks.
Good, good points. Definitely. Doc, Director Dyak.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I concur with Director Levy. I think there's some short and long-term issues. I however, am going to focus on the short-term influencing things within the region here in the next six months. You know, to me, I think is, you know, I'm, I'm writing here and listening. It, it feels like we need to get collaborative. You know, Executive Director Rex indicated CCI, CML, Governor's Office. Metro Mayor's Caucus was, was, was discussed. I've, I've had conversations with the, the incoming executive director, Heidi Williams. Just at, at a very, very, very high level. DeMar has indicated Denver Metro Association of Realtors have indicated some interest in being a part of the conversation. I don't know, HBA, Home Builders Association, that that would be good. As well as to, to bring in our state legislatures to really show them what we're trying to do. To try to bring them into the conversation. So hopefully we can educate and inform together. I think that would be good. And, um, you know, I think here within the next six months, building momentum within the media potentially, um, you know, as, as Director Starker indicated, uh, data and performance measures, I think uh, those that drive our strategies would be of interest, I think. Uh, to those people to, to again, educate and inform. Uh, not only our, our compatriots, but the people out there to, for them to get an understanding of what we truly are doing at this point in time. To, to achieve these optimal housing within our communities and you know, maybe even a newspaper thing, um, you know, I, I talked to a individual on the board and maybe an op ed or two, if we only had a old newspaper guy who can, who can write one or two of those things, it'd be great. That is all.
Thank you. Yeah, it is interesting, I think. Because to have a stakeholder like the home builders seems important to me because as we develop these strategies, we want to make sure that they are strategies that also give a comfort level to builders. Because there's a national housing shortage and someone could choose to build in, you know, New Hampshire or Iowa instead of building here. If, if things get too difficult, too challenging or are too disorganized. So I, I think that's a good suggestion as well. Executive Director Rex.
Thank you, Madam Chair, very much. And I also, as Director Levy said, I, I want to thank for everyone for the conversation. That has been wonderful. Um, you know what Director Levy had said, it really resonated with me with regards to our, there are obviously long-term reasons to do this outside of any legislative. And Lord knows that Sheila's been preaching that to me ever since we had this conversation. I guess I'm a little more transactional than what Sheila is and thank God we have her. Uh, I, I, you know, I'm looking, you know, I think we're, listen, we're still, we're still trying to figure out a funding strategy associated with this long-term study, right? You know, we're committed to, you know, getting us through the first phase of this through the end of the year. And, but, but as Sheila mentioned, we are exploring some other options at the state level there through various DOL grants or maybe something might happen in the legislature in next, uh, next session. That frees up some additional monies for us for studies of this nature. Um, but I just wanted to throw that out there. We haven't fully realized the, the funding strategy for this, but we're, I think we're in pretty good shape through the end of the year. There's just more of an FYI than anything at this point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions? Yes, Director Teal.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm actually in my mobile office as well. It is called the Parker Arby's. So please excuse any background noise. The, going to Doug's comment, but also back to Sheila's about funded. And obviously we have an immediate funding issue. But then of this program, but then Sheila was talking about how this could likely open up other funding strategies. Should we also have, when we modify our unified work plan? Should we also have a analysis of what funding strategies there could be long-term? As opposed to what they're not? So that part of a, a short-term product that could be presented at the end of this work, of this year, going into the next legislative session? Where the gaps in any sort of fiscal progress going into years of future could, could be identified and brought to the legislators, legislature's attention. Maybe an, an additional piece to add to the, the work list for us. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Executive Director Rex.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Director Teo, thank you for the comment. Um, I will say that I, I don't think it's necessary to include that in the UPWP and I tell you why. The, the Unified Planning Work Program is specifically related to the tasks that we would accomplish with using our federal money. So, you know, a, a task such as what you're proposing would not necessarily be, be allowed, be an allowable expense associated with that. But I think you're right, though. I think that is something that we, you know, whether it's in a work program or not, that we have to, we have to really, um, you know, put our, put our heads together and figure out a plan. And if I may, Madam Chair, since I have the floor right now, I, um, you know, the other thing that, you know, we're, it's going to be, you know, pretty fast paced that we're going to go through here between now and the end of the year. And, um, you know, I just want you all to know that we're hopeful that we can rely on your staff and the resources that you have as well to, uh, to get us some of the data and information that we need. And I just said, as an example, um, you know, some of the testimony that Director Baker shared in, uh, related to Senate Bill 213 referred to 108,000 units that were entitled in Arapahoe County. And, and we've had conversations with Arapahoe County staff and exactly how they accomplished that and how they work with the local governments within Arapahoe County to be able to aggregate that data up. And, you know, a task such as that, well, I think we would hope that other counties as, or other communities would, would, um, you know, you know, would jump on that and, and be able to provide that in a timely fashion so that we can, you know, move faster even. So I, I just wanted to share that, but you know, ultimately we're going to try to Scotch tape together whatever, whatever data sources we have right now in order to get to, to that finish line at the end of the year. So thank you.
Thank you. And I see Sheila had added, let's see, thank you for guidance from Director Odoricio about sweep. And housing advocates to the list of stakeholders to engage. Those are, those are both important comments and groups to, to add as stakeholders, not strategy necessarily, but stakeholders. So other questions or comments? All right then, if, are there other matters for members? Hearing none. There is an effort to cancel our July 5th meeting. So our next board work session is most likely on August 2nd. Uh, it will be at our regular four o'clock time. And at this point, it is 5:05 and we are adjourned. Thank you for productive discussion and for attending today.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you.